I'd like to call this October 2nd meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you call the roll?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here. Let the record show that all of the school board members are in attendance along with our student liaison, Mr. Ray Bolton, and our school board attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves, as well as our division superintendent, Dr. Linda Schifflet, and board clerk Carolyn Bowers. At this time, I'm going to turn things over to our student liaison to make some introductions.
Tonight, our invocation will be given by Katie Hadley, a 5th grader from Asbury Elementary.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What is Success by Alicia Ricks, written when she was 14 years old? What is the journey to success? Success is not gained by defeat. Success does not come overnight. Success can emerge at any age. Success is working to full potential. Success is courage. Success is lending a hand. Success is not listening to negativity. Success is being positive. Success is living your life instead of the life of others. Success is being proud. Success is overcoming obstacles. Success is striving. Success is listening to your heart. Most of all, success is accepting what you have accomplished. We send Asbury wishes for a successful 2013-2014 school year to all Hampton students.
Katie, come back up to the mic for a little bit. We want to get to know you just a little bit better. So what are some of your interests at Asbury? What things do you like?
I like science. I like all the teachers. My most favorite part is learning. I hate recess.
Aww.
You hate?
Well, I see that you brought some very special people with you tonight. Would you like to introduce them to everyone?
I have my dad, the nurse, the assistant principal, Mrs. Suggs, and the principal, Mrs. Johnson.
Well, we thank you for coming tonight. We enjoyed your poem, and we're very happy that you're excited about this school year.
Thank you. Thank you very much for those very inspiring words and some advice for success that we as board members, I think, can put to good use in our meetings and throughout the year. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. We move on to recognitions, and I will call upon our new executive director of marketing and public relations for Hampton City Schools, Ms. Diana Gallata. And she will be assisted this evening by board member, Ms. Monica Smith.
Good evening. I'm pleased to recognize two teachers from Hampton High School who earned the prestigious Gold Star Teacher Award for their students' performance on the WISE 2012-13 Financial Literacy Certification Test. Only 361 educators in the entire country earned this award. In 2012-13, 77% of students nationally passed the test and were designated as Certified Financially Literate Personal Finance Educators, who have a class with 90% or more students passing the test, earned the distinction of being named a Gold Star Teacher. I am very pleased to recognize Chuck Oxenfeld and Rhonda Russell. Board member, go ahead. Board member, Mrs. Monica Smith, will say a few words and present you with the token of our appreciation.
Think if I can maneuver around this. It is my honor to recognize you both tonight. Excellence in teaching is just so important in our school division, so it truly is my honor, on behalf of the board, to present this to you. And I'll read the certificates that are being presented to you both. The Hampton City School Board congratulates Chuck Oxenfeld, Hampton High School, and Rhonda Russell, Hampton High School, for the WISE Gold Star Teacher Award. And thank you all so much for all the hard work you do every day.
Congratulations. If there are any family members or school administrators here to support Chuck and Rhonda, please stand now so we can give you a round of applause. It is now my privilege to recognize our first DOVE Award of the school year. The DOVE Award, which stands for Dedication of Valuable Employees, is given to an employee who regularly provides exceptional customer service to our students, staff, and patrons. Our winner tonight is Frederick Anderson from Adult Education. Mr. Anderson is retired from the U.S. Air Force. Come on down. Kathy Wallner nominated Mr. Anderson, and she said that, and I quote, "You will find Fred in the halls engaging frustrated students, walking them to a table to show them how to correct the test problem they got wrong, be it dividing fractions or writing a paragraph. He encourages our male students to be good fathers to their babies. He had bought them books to read to their babies. Fred is the unofficial ombudsman for Adult Education. He doesn't see limits in his job description. Just lives as the family member ready to help. He lives, how may I serve you?" Ms. Smith will now say a few words and recognize you for your accomplishments.
Thank you. And thank you so much. It's great to be able to recognize somebody from Adult Education. It's such a vital, important part of our Hampton City Schools. And what you do, not only in your job, but building those relationships that she was talking about, is really going above and beyond. And I know you've reached a lot of wonderful students that way, and thank you so much for everything you do. And I'll read the certificate to you. The DOVE Award, presented to Frederick Anderson, campus at Lee, presented by the Hampton City School Board for Outstanding Customer Service in Hampton City Schools. Thank you so much for all you do. And chocolate, which I guess I could give you.
I would like to ask Kathy Wallner, who nominated Mr. Anderson, to stand. Are you here? Let's give you a round of applause. Also, if there are any family members or school administrators or colleagues here, if you could stand so we could give you a round of applause. Thanks again, and congratulations to all of our wonderful staff members. We are very proud of you. It is now my honor to turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Linda Schifflet.
Well, it's my pleasure tonight to be able to present some Academy Awards. And these are some very special Academy Awards because they're from the Virginia School Board Association. As many of you know, our school board members are so very active. But what you may not know is not only are they active in everyday school life and in community life, but they also take the time to become learners, to learn more about their responsibilities as a board member, and to learn how to better serve the community and the students of Hampton City Schools. And so tonight, it's my distinct pleasure to present to them the VSBA Academy Awards. And first of all, at the achievement level is Mrs. Henry, Mr. Harper, and Mrs. Smith. I'm going to get the certificates out afterwards because they've gotten jumbled up and in the interest of time. But all of the certificates have their names on them and their achievement level. And for excellence, Mr. Pearson, congratulations. And for distinction, Mrs. Phillips. Our vice chair, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Kilgore. And finally, but not least, our chairman, Mrs. Mugler. You know, I hope everyone realizes the amount of devotion and commitment by our school board members. I know that you see them here at board meetings, but I think you don't really realize the number of hours that they put into being a school board member. And we are so very fortunate to have individuals who take their jobs so seriously and who are truly committed to serving Hampton City Schools and truly believe in our vision of every child, every day, whatever it takes. And so I want to say a very special thanks to a very special group of individuals. Thank you for everything that you do.
That concludes our recognitions. Y'all slid that last one in, I think, after I had looked at the agenda last time. So that was an interesting surprise because I was wanting to pilfer through all of her. But I didn't mess up her certificates. Someone else did, but I was curious to know what they were. But I do want to, on behalf of the board, also to congratulate and acknowledge our recipients tonight of the school WISE Gold Star Teachers, Mr. Oxenfeld and Ms. Russell. Congratulations to you, and also to Mr. Anderson for your service. And you're being honored tonight with the DOVE Award. We thank you all very much for sharing your gifts, your time, and your talents with the children of our community. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. Congratulations again. We move on now to our consent agenda, which consists of items 3.01, our personnel report, 3.02, minutes of the school board meeting of September 4, 2013, and 3.03, certification of the closed meeting of September 4, 2013. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Phillips and seconded by Mrs. Henry that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Aye. Motion carries. We move on to superintendent and staff reports. I'll turn things over now to Dr. Schifflet.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. Our first report this evening is the Local Disability Plan. You may recall that Mrs. Ruth gave a report a few months ago about the Virginia Disability Plan. And tonight is an update on our decision as to the option that we're going to pursue. Ms. Ruth?
Thank you, Dr. Schifflet. Good evening. As Dr. Schifflet mentioned, we are going to review the requirements of the Virginia Retirement System that all VRS employees or employers offer a short-term and long-term disability plan. This will be a quick review of information that we provided you back in July. We are also going to talk a little bit about the options that were out for us and our exploration of those options and the recommended next steps. And I've got Mrs. Scott up here from Finance. She's been my partner in crime on this project, and she'll be answering or helping to answer any questions you might have at the end of the presentation. Effective January 1, 2014, all VRS employers are required to offer a local disability plan that offers short-term disability and long-term disability to full-time new hire employees. And for the long-term disability, that means until the employee is either able to return to work or until they are eligible to retire, whichever comes first. VRS is offering a Virginia Local Disability Plan. We talked to you about that somewhat in July. School divisions have the option to either opt out of the VLDP, or we can opt in. If we opt out, we must offer our own local plan, and the decision is irrevocable. Effective January 1, 2014, all new hires will be enrolled in the VRS Hybrid Retirement Plan. We also talked to you all about what that means for our new employees, starting in January. Unlike the current VRS retirement plans, the hybrid plan will not have a disability retirement option. Right now, a lot of entities don't have the disability program. We do in Hampton. We have that as an optional program. A lot of both school divisions and other localities don't offer a disability plan because full-time employees have the option for disability retirement. Anyone we hire, starting January 1, 2014, will not have that as an option. And therefore, we are all required to find a plan that replaces disability retirement. Over the summer since we spoke to you in July, business and finance and human resources departments have worked with Wells Fargo, they are benefits consultants, to determine the most suitable option for our employees. We looked at the VLDP, and then we looked at three or four other plans that are offered by various insurance companies. The search revealed a comparable plan. It's offered by the Standard Insurance Company. The Standard has gone out and specifically developed a plan to serve as an alternative to the VLDP, and that's exactly how they're marketing it. A review by both Hampton City Schools and Wells Fargo has determined that this is a viable option to the VLDP. And in addition to meeting the requirements, it actually provides a higher level of benefit than what is required in several areas. So we think it'll give our employees some richer benefits than they would receive through VLDP. There are also cost savings that will be available to Hampton City Schools. With the VRS plan or VLDP, the cost for teachers is 39 cents per $100 of salary. The Standard is 37 cents. So not a significant savings. The significant savings comes with our group of employees that VRS classifies as others. And this would be a lot of our trades-type positions, mechanics, custodians, the bus drivers, food service workers. Actually, with the VRS plan, we would be paying 91 cents per $100 of salary. We will be paying 37 cents per $100 of salary with the Standard plan. The Standard is a three-year rate guarantee. The rates for the VLDP are only guaranteed through June 30, 2014. The rates will be different, in all likelihood, on July 1, 2014. So with this being said, our recommendation is that the school board approve the resolution to opt out of the VLDP plan prior to November, the November 1, 2013 deadline. And assuming that you all agree to that resolution, division staff will work with procurement to establish a Hampton City Schools Local Disability Plan. Questions?
Questions from board members? Mrs. Henry?
The expense is the division's or is it shared with the employee?
100% the division's.
So if you have a division employee who makes $50,000, that's $185 a head for cost to the division?
I can't do the math that fast in my head, but that sounds about right, yes.
Times however many teachers that is.
Only the teachers in the hybrid plan, and not our Plan 1 and Plan 2.
So the Plan 1 and Plan 2 people are covered under the existing VRS disability, and we don't have to go there?
We don't. And they may also choose to participate. We currently have a voluntary disability plan. They may also participate in that. Our new employees will also have the option to participate for their first year of employment in the voluntary plan at their cost. There's a one-year waiting period to participate in the local disability plan, and that's something that's coming from VRS. And so we will allow them to participate in the voluntary plan at their cost for their first year of employment, and then they would automatically be enrolled in the local disability plan, beginning with year two.
So what is the estimated cost to the division of? Obviously, you're doing everything you can to save costs.
What's the estimated cost?
For the budget for next year.
You know what? It's going to start out being fairly small because we don't anticipate having a large number. It's only going to be brand-new, never had VRS service before or never had it. I mean, if they hadn't cashed it out, that's new. Or if they've never had VRS service before, you become a hybrid employee.
So it might be 100 employees the first year?
It could be a very small number. It's kind of like when we first started hiring Plan 2 people, and it built up kind of slowly. Because, again, we may have new employees that we hire that are coming from another VRS entity and are already Plan 1 or Plan 2. So the hybrids will take a little while to build up to a significant number. But we will do an estimate on the number that we think we'll potentially hire and build that into the budget.
All the classified employees, will they all kick into this? Or are they VRS folks now already too?
It's only new employees.
Only brand-new employees.
Doesn't matter whether they're teachers or classified or transportation, whatever.
Okay, so this isn't a huge impact immediately, and we're doing the best we can to have the cost plus the best benefits for our employees?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members? Mr. Harper?
Ms. Ruth, if you could go back to the recommendation, the previous slide?
Yes, sir.
In order of sequence, we're going to approve the resolution, and then there's going to be a program established, a disability plan. But we're going to approve to opt out, and then we're going to look for the new plan.
We have already identified a plan. We have, through procurement, we are working with a cooperative contract from another locality. And we have already done the research, but we can't move forward with starting the process to work with the Standard until the school board has voted to opt out of the Virginia Local -- excuse me, the Virginia Local Disability Plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Harper, you'll note that we do have that resolution on for deliberation tonight, but we would like to ask that it be moved to action because we will be having our Community Priorities Workshop at the next board meeting. And so we need to take action on this prior to November 1.
Mrs. Smith, you had a question?
Yeah, just one question for clarification. You had said it was not reversible. You were basically, if you opt in, you're stuck. If you opt out, you're stuck. Either way...
You're in or you're out, and it's irrevocable.
And if we opt out, that still leaves us with options out in the free market out there? Versus if we opted in, we would be limited to that and basically trapped, for another word? Okay, so I like that about it. It does leave our options open.
Yeah. And talking with our consultants, they feel that the market is very soft, or it's a growing market with external companies who are beginning to offer plans that are comparable to and/or exceed what's offered by VLDP. So we think we'll be just fine.
Okay. Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Schifflet?
Our next report by Dr. Cynthia Cooper is our accreditation report. Dr. Cooper?
Good evening. Mrs. Mugler, Mr. Kilgore, members of the board, Dr. Schifflet. I'm pleased to be here this evening to give you an official report of our results and our standards of learning tests, as well as our accreditation and federal AMO status for each of the schools. You undoubtedly have read some of this information in the newspaper or perhaps seen it on VDOE website. It did come out in terms of flat SOL pass rates came out in August, and then late in September is when we got the official accreditation reports. So although you might have seen part of it, I do want to give you a broader picture of how we did as a division. First, I want to draw your attention to the different colors of some of those assessments. Those are all the assessments that we've always done, reading, writing, mathematics, science, history, and social science. But the ones that are in yellow are new assessments this year. Last year, mathematics was new, and we saw a rather dramatic difference in our results. And this year, with the new assessments, as was predicted by the Department of Education, there were declines across the state. They actually predicted in English there would be about a 20% decline. We did not go all the way down to 20%, but we did see a dip in performance. Mathematics, which went down fairly dramatically last year, again, lower than the state anticipated, the 30 percentage points. We've come back up, and when you add in the adjustments that are made for recovery students, this figure comes up to 70% when you look at individual schools and how those rates come out for accreditation ratings. Science, again, a new assessment. We did see a dip, not as steep as some others. And history and social science was new about four years ago, when we've been making steady gains ever since that assessment was new. So there is a clear correlation with new and different, more rigorous assessments and a dip in performance until we get the strategies and help our young people to be successful in those new assessments. I wanted to give you a grade-by-grade comparison so you could just see overall. You'll see in English reading, some of the good news there is that our 3rd grade students, you know, English at 3rd grade, reading is a big deal, and a lot of people use that statistics. It is the highest of our grade and middle school assessments. Two out of three students did well on that assessment right out of the gate. And then you see we have a sharp increase in our end-of-course tests because our high school students have had more opportunity to practice critical thinking skills and other coursework that they've had. So they were perhaps more able to tackle this new assessment. You see the writing. These results, we shared with the board and the community when they came out in the spring. The longer students stayed with us, the better their results were. And we expect those to go up dramatically. As we saw that recovery in math this year, we expect both reading and writing to come up in the following year. up in the following year as we get strategies and supports for young people to help them do better. Now mathematics is an interesting story. You'll see that there's not a lot of variation between 60 and 77 for most of our subject areas. You see a very large dip down at seventh grade. And there is a reason for that that really has more to do with the way that we push students into advanced math at middle school so that the testing population for our seventh graders, our Course 2 is what it should be called, is much smaller than other school divisions. It's roughly 29% of our seventh graders. The other seventh graders are either taking Algebra 1 or they're taking the eighth-grade pre-algebra test because of our push. Still, even given that reason, if I'm the parent of one of the young people in Course 2, I'm going to want us to do better at that, and we have a commitment to do better at that. We have seen gains in every other math test except for Course 2. That stayed very similar to what it was last year, so I know our math curriculum leaders and math instructional leaders will be coming to talk with you about some strategies that we'll put in place to help this group of young people be more successful this spring coming up. Our science rates, again, went down, but not nearly as significantly as some of the other subjects. Test construction has a lot to do with that, and some of the ways that we teach science and had some problem solving and working with multiple correct answers early on in the science curriculum so that students were not as thrown by this one. And social studies, we made a gain in the division. I want to tell you that this chart is a little deceptive. There's really only a 12-point difference between the bottom of the scale and the top of the scale, but as those numbers converge with each other, the column length changes. So I don't want anybody to look at this and think that Grade 6 U.S. History is significantly lower. Every one of these social studies marks is above the 70% minimum. In fact, all of them are above 75%. That's how it looks in the division. I wanted to let you know how it looks in schools. Where did this play out? And it was nearly universal. The declines that the DOE told us that we would see in student scores happened at virtually all of our schools. English reading, it was 29 out of 30. At writing, it was all 30. In science, the decline was 28 out of 30. So those new assessments, until we get the strategies in place and the students have enough time to use those strategies and practice those new skills, those declines were all over. It wasn't a particular instructional issue at one school or another. The good news on the slide is that the rebound in math, as we put those strategies into place that we explained to you earlier in the year, 25 out of 30 schools had gains, and those gains ranged from one percentage point all the way up to 39 percentage points. Some really great stories in people coming together in collaborative learning teams to solve problems, institute new instructional strategies, and really do a great job bringing those scores up. Again, history and social science, a 3% gain for the division overall, and that was spread across 16 schools. So all of this is going to have an effect on our accreditation, but not just new assessments will have an effect on our accreditation. During the same year where we had three new assessments that were significantly more rigorous, we also had changes in accreditation standards in three areas. You'll see the red there in science and history at third grade moved from 50% to 70%. And then the target for English used to be 70% in the secondary, and it moved to 75% this year. So the combination of those two things has had a significant effect on the number of schools that you'll see are accredited. So we'll take a look at that next. We have 15 of 30 schools with full accreditation this year. We have 15 schools that are accredited with warning. Five of them are warned in a single subject, two math and three English. Six are warned in two subjects. Most of the time, that is English and math. We do have one that's English and science. And four are warned in three areas. The good news is, again, as you might have seen in media coverage of the changes across the state, that none of our schools were denied accreditation. That is the most serious issue that a school division can face, and our schools are not in that situation at present. These are the schools that are accredited in a single area. Machen Elementary, it's kind of a heartbreaker. Machen Elementary had close to 39 percentage point gain in mathematics, came out of warning in mathematics, and the new assessment in English took them down into warning in a different subject. You'll see similar stories in other of our schools. Tyler Elementary had a 25% gain in mathematics, and again, the new assessments, they're now warned in English. Phoebus High came up nine percentage points in math, but it wasn't enough to carry them. And so while there have been improvements, the three-year average is where some schools were accredited last year, and if they didn't make the target outright, then they went into warning. Here are the schools that are accredited with warning in two areas. You see, most of them, Aberdeen, Cary, Forest, Andrews, and Davis are English and math, and Tarantus, English and science. Again, there are some stories in that bunch where we see tremendous gains in different subjects, but just not enough to make the state standard, that minimum 70% or 75% in English. We do have several schools that are warned in three areas. Bassett, Bryan, Burbank, and Lindsay. Bryan, another particular heartbreak, heartbreak, 37% gain in mathematics, close, but not enough to take it up over the top. So it is warned in three areas this year and remains as a priority school. There are some highlights, some things that need to be celebrated because there was good work at many of our schools, in fact, all of our schools. 14 schools made the state target in math outright rather than using that three-year average. We only had six schools last year, so that's more than double the number that just nailed it out of the gate. 100% of our schools, the increases that we've seen in graduation rate and the decrease in dropout rate, 100% of our schools carried the day, exceeding the state target for the state on-time graduation and completion index point. Also, in federal measures, you remember, federal measures are for gap group performance, and they're for subgroup performance. Those targets are set based on historical performance, and many say that those targets are more realistic expectations for school improvement. They do call for improvement every year, but 90% of our schools met every federal math target, and that's excellent news. 24 schools met all of the reading annual measurable objectives as well. And then we had 19 schools that met both reading and math annual measurable objectives across the board, meaning all of the subgroups and the all-students category. We do have work to do. We know we have work to do, and I think in the upcoming weeks, you'll have an opportunity to hear from some of our curriculum leaders about things that we're putting in place to enhance the curriculum and also provide support to the instructional staff and to students at our schools so that you'll see these results change as they did in math this year, go upward. We'll see them go upward in writing and science and reading as well. I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you had at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Questions from board members?
I just have a comment.
Mr. Harper?
Dr. Cooper, good report. I'm definitely encouraged by the fact that test scores came up. In some cases, 39, 40%.
Yes, sir.
And it didn't reach this mark here, but it's a lot of hard work bringing those scores up.
Yes, sir, it was.
So we should be encouraged by the fact that our trend is like this instead of like this, and people shouldn't get confused about it and disheartened because the test scores are not here yet, but they have come a long way, which means there is work, there is achievement going on, and our teachers are working hard. And our custodians and our cafeteria staff, everybody's working hard. So I'm encouraged.
Thank you, sir.
Other comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Henry?
Thanks for the report, Dr. Cooper. I think that it's, if you're a member of the public and you see that a number of schools are not meeting targets, the most important thing for us to realize is that the targets keep changing. It's not that there is one standard that has been there since they started SOLs and schools were held accountable for them in 1998. It's every year that either the test has changed, or the curriculum has changed, or the cut score has changed. It's not just the percentage of pass rate that's gone up, but the score that determines what is passing changes. So if, once we get successful at something, they change the pass score. They change the pass rate, they change the cut score. So teachers are out there doing a terrific job, and kids are learning more and more and more than they did before, but it looks like we're making two steps backwards because the target changes all the time. And I think it's commendable that in the face of that, that the teachers persist and that the principals and the kids persist. In fact, the more I look at the tests and the way they were engineered the last time, it's like, as a teacher, you're taught how to write tests, and you can write tests where students can prove what they know, or you can write tests that catch kids at the gotcha moment and prove what they don't know. And I think we've been dealing with that kind of test lately, and we're dealing with changing targets. So while, yes, I know the teachers are working so hard, it's very, it's courageous of them to continue to persist in the face of getting slapped around by the fact that the target changes all the time or the assessments change all the time. And our kids are learning more and more. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members or comments? Thank you very much, Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. And as she referenced in her presentation, we will be coming forward at later board meetings, talking about our plans to address our academic achievement. I'm really excited to introduce the next report. As many of you recall, during our budget deliberations and ultimate budget approval, we were given some funds by our city council to support a one-to-one initiative. And so tonight, I've asked Dr. Leary and her team to give us an update on where they are on this project. Dr. Leary?
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. And what a, what great timing for this report to follow, that wonderful report you just heard from Dr. Cooper, because tonight, we're going to be, we are going to be talking to you about the planning that we're doing for our one-to-one initiative. We're going to provide you an overview of the process that we're following and the progress that we've made so far. This initiative will put a digital device in the hands of students and change for the better their personal learning experience, and we couldn't be more excited to be a part of the group that gets the opportunity to put this initiative in place. This picture represents some of our current seventh-grade science students who are using the iPads on their new digital textbooks that they were issued at the beginning of the year, and we have a special treat for you at the end because you're going to get some view of some of it live, and so we're excited to share that with you. These children are so excited about the opportunity to work on these iPads, and these pictures just capture a little bit of what they do. Our work team is committed, and they are a very much dedicated working group of people. I can't tell you how exciting it is and pleasant to be with a group of people who are so focused on the task that our group is. You can see that we represent a broad stakeholder group, whether it's instructional and operational support staff, business and community people, school-based administrators, teachers, parent representation. So it's a very broad group that's meeting on a regular basis to design this project. We have 18 members that are participating in this group, and some of them are here this evening, and I'd like this opportunity to have them stand and be recognized. Yeah, I don't know who's more excited every time we meet because it's just such a pleasure to have people around the table who are excited about technology and the possibilities that this project have for all of us. This project is centered around learning as its primary outcome, and it ties together quite nicely with our strategic plan. So we have identified several of our strategic plan key initiatives that we feel align closely with this project. This one is in relation to students meeting or exceeding grade-appropriate standards in the core subjects. Students having the ability to organize, prioritize, set goals, and manage time. Demonstrating the ability to collaborate and work productively with others, and that ever-important resolving conflicts when they arise. And demonstrating the ability to think creatively and creatively and critically. During the course of this project, we are using the quality tool of a project charter. So the project charter allows us to keep track of our work and monitor progress, and will also provide a roadmap for when we have additional funds and can continue to put devices in the hands of our students. Our group has been spending a great deal of time researching. We have been looking at websites. We have been talking to districts, both near and far, who have been implementing one-on-one initiatives in their division. We are learning tremendously on what was successful for them, as well as what we need to stay away from. We've been participating in webinars, we've read white papers, and we have planned site visits to some of the localities as we get further along in our planning initiatives so that we can see firsthand how things are going in their divisions. We plan to continue to learn as we go. It's a process that changes minute by minute. I think some of you have seen the emails that come out on a regular basis with another exciting idea or strategy about a one-to-one initiative, so we're going to keep learning the whole time that we're implementing. Our work team has spent a great deal of time in the developing stage as well. Once we found ourselves better informed about one-to-one initiatives, it became very clear in the research that successful projects are based on what your outcomes are. So we have to know where we are going first before we can talk about anything else. So up until this point, we had not had any conversations about grade-level implementations or device selection because we had to be clear about what is it that we want to accomplish. So we have agreed that our goals and objectives will be rooted in these four areas: student achievement, student engagement, personalized learning, and engaging our stakeholders and our community. And specifically, our measurable outcomes will be based on student outcomes, outcomes related to our instructional staff, our administrators, and parents and guardians. So at this point, we've identified the broad areas, and our next steps will be to completely develop our goals, objectives, and outcomes. And as you'll see, one of our work teams, our subgroup, will be in taking a look at program evaluation, but we have to have our goals and our outcomes established before we can go any further. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to John Eagle, who will talk to you a little bit about grade levels and devices.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is such an exciting project. In terms of collaborating, our work team, again, as Dr. Leary mentioned, is a very enthusiastic group. One of the things that we had talked about early on were the grade levels that we were going to initially roll this out with. And you may recall, the business plan that we originally submitted or proposed to the city council talked about doing grades five and seven the first year, then the next year, the fifth and seventh grader still have their devices, so now six and eight have them. You do five and seven, again, they have five to eight, and then you continue on the following year, you do five, and now you don't have to do seven. You do 10, not to get into the weeds, but again, we were talking about doing five and seven, grades five and seven initially, and our work team did deliberate that quite a bit. Cheryl Grober and her team did some research on that, and we kicked it around. You know, obviously, we wish we had enough resources to do all grade levels and to do as many grade levels as we could at one time, but we looked at the amount, the number of applications that are available, the impact that it'll have in terms of where the students are in their academic career, and we still came back to grades five and seven being the best grade levels to start with. That being said, it's not necessarily etched in stone because the next step in the process is our device selection, and we do have an RFP that's out on the street, and so the results of this RFP are going to inform us a great deal about what's available in the marketplace, the financing terms that are available. in the marketplace, the financing terms that are available, all those various kinds of things. Because it is out on the street, I can, I can speak to it in general terms, but we have a pre-proposal conference this Friday and the, the vendors have until October 18th to submit their proposals. The RFP is written in such a way that we cover a variety of different specifications for the vendors to answer questions regarding, of course, price and warranty, the rugginess, how manageable the device is, of course, all important, the educational instructional applications that are available for the device, and all of those things. But the RFP is also very flexible. With this particular RFP, we can make multiple awards, so we're not pigeonholed until one vendor. We can pilot a couple of different products during the next year as we're trying to figure out exactly which product is going to meet our needs the best. As, in terms of the implementation timeline, again, we're going to hopefully have this RFP wrapped up in the next several weeks and begin piloting actually in January 2014. And then we'll start a full implementation cycle beginning in the fall next year. As far as the next steps go, we do have several work teams. First one, professional development, as we, as we, Dr. Leary mentioned, this is probably one of the most important. We want to make sure that our teachers receive the professional development, they need an order to use a device effectively in instructional setting. We have a public relations stakeholder outreach subteam that's going to be working to make sure that the community, that parents, the press, everybody is well-informed on where we are on the project and what our plans are. We have a teacher pilot selection work team that's going to be working to select the teachers that are going to be involved in the initial pilots coming up in January. Again, Dr. Leary mentioned the program evaluation team that works hand-in-hand with the outcomes and the goals and objectives that we've set for the program. The device management, of course, is in full force right now. What I'm overseeing, working with the RFP and looking at what devices we're going to be using. A policy work team to look at setting policies to determine, you know, what do you do if, if a student loses a device, or just what are the kinds of things that we need in terms of policy in order to run the program effectively? And of course, most importantly, curriculum integration. How are the devices going to be used day in and day out in the classroom? So anyway, with that, I just want to say I am very excited because with all of these work teams, when our, when our team asks for volunteers, there was no lack of volunteers. Everybody really wanted to participate and so these, these work teams are filling up quite quickly, so it is very exciting. With that, I am going to turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Jennifer Lockett.
Thank you, John. Well, this is an exciting project as well as an exciting time to be in education. I will be discussing two other initiatives that will impact our one-to-one pilot. The Virginia eLearning Backpack Initiative, which is proposed by Governor McDonnell, will, is allocating funds that will provide a tablet computer device for all ninth grade students at selected schools. So this is a very exciting opportunity for us. We will begin with current ninth grade students and this will continue for three additional years as long as funding permits. We are looking forward to this initiative as it complements our own and will extend tablet devices from elementary school students all the way to high school students. Okay, the second initiative is our seventh grade life science digital textbook. Our seventh graders already have a head start on tablet devices as the science department has adopted a digital textbook this year. iPad carts have been purchased for every seventh grade classroom within the district. This initiative, led by Heather Greer, our science teacher specialist, is off to a great start. These devices allow our teachers to become facilitators of learning and allow a personalized education for our students every day. Let's face it, the students of today live this way, we need to teach them the way that they learn. The video you are about to see is footage that's captured completely on an iPad and developed by our science CITT. Let's take a look at how technology has transformed education at Eaton Middle School.
Well, the iPads are fantastic. I love having a digital textbook because the students can access it from anywhere, they don't have to lug it around with them. The extra materials in the textbook allow for immediate assessment and immediate feedback for the students. That's very beneficial. And it's also engaging because these kids are so stimulated by technology all of the time. When they come into a traditional classroom, we expect them to be excited by pen and paper, that doesn't happen. With the iPads, they're instantly on it, they're instantly engaged. It's cut down on classroom behaviors. I've noticed increased effort from my students. They enjoy what they're doing and they do it well now because they have that extra engagement as well as, you know, if they come to me and they don't understand something, I can say, "There's an app for that." And we can pull out iCell and they can manipulate the cell parts. The app that I've been using frequently is Socrative. And that allows, again, for instantaneous feedback for the students on questions. I can pace the quiz, I can stop, I can talk to them about something if kids are having problems. And it just, overall, I hate to say it, but it makes a little bit less work for me. It allows me to be less of a sage on the, a sage on the stage and more like the guide on the side. So I feel like it's a more student-centered environment because of having the technology.
It doesn't get much more exciting than that, does it? Seeing children so engaged in learning and teachers as well. So we've said this several times this evening, but our, our work team is focused, we understand what our purpose is, we know where we're headed, and we are eager to continue moving forward. We have much to accomplish to implement this pilot successfully, but we are confident that we are going to be where we need to be. And we are eagerly looking forward to the opportunity to train our teachers and our staff and put these devices in the hands of children and turn them loose and let them learn. So at this point, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Leary. Questions from board members, Mrs. Phillips?
Um, yes. This is very exciting and I have iPads at my house and my eight-year-old figured out how to buy apps and I got a $300 bill. But I have a question, and I know y'all have worked very hard on this and it is very much appreciated. My thing is, and this is just my personal feeling, because I've already had two fifth grade boys go through, I don't think they're mature enough to take care of them. And that's just my opinion, looking at fifth graders, particularly boys, they're kind of hard on things. The other thing is, is the way you're rolling it out, none of our high school students will have the opportunity to use them. And I would like, and I understand, you know, we start younger so they'll know, but I feel like those children should be allowed the opportunity as well. And I don't under, and I know we did the Take Your Device to School program they did over at Kickitane, but a lot of those kids don't have devices. And I'm just wondering why we can't start with the high schools. And then one more thing is, do these kids take these home with them?
Well, part, part of what we have to flesh out is all of the details regarding how the actual project will be implemented. And it's interesting because some of the very things that you're talking about this evening are what we have discussed in great detail in our work team. Because there's been a lot of discussion about what is the appropriate age to begin introducing our children to a one-on-one initiative. We know that our four-year-olds are using computers and iPads in schools. And so we know that the age is not the issue. The issue has to do with where is that best optimum learning opportunity? Where can we get the most return on our investment and roll this up in a logical manner? So the very things that you're asking about, we've had conversations about as well. And so we haven't finished outlining all of the details regarding how the device would be handled, but the intent of the, of the initiative is to provide this digital device to students in such a way that, you know, back when I was in school, it was a pencil with an eraser. It's the child's tool that will help him or her access their own personalized learning environment.
Now, but like the seventh graders that have that science book, do they take that with them?
They do not. That's a classroom set that stays in the classroom. And so this implementation would complement that.
Okay.
Because we would have, you know, a bit a little over a semester under our belt by the time we get everything rolled out.
I, I'm just wondering about when they take it home, playing on the iPad and all, buying apps?
Well, that's interesting, you know, we, as I said, we've been talking to districts near and far who have implemented it and had conversations with a neighboring district who shared their data with us in terms of repairs and loss and misuse. And the numbers in that district were very low when it came to the numbers of devices that had been damaged or lost or misplaced. So, you know, we're not saying that everything that we put in kids' hands is going to come back exactly the way we send it home. I would love to say that about textbooks too. But, you know, we really do want, want to put the supports in place that allow this initiative to be a success.
Well, a lot of our elementary schools, particularly the title ones, they have so much of that stuff. So like I said, my thing is, I just, our high school students are not going to get the opportunity with it being rolled out this way.
Right. And, and you know, just to remind you, we do have the eBackpack Initiative, which we should hear more information about mid to late October from the Department of Education regarding who is eligible and, and how many devices and how many children. And that starts in the ninth grade. And then pending continued authorization of funding, you know, subsequent ninth grade as well. So we'll have more information to share about that as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm not trying to put a damper on it, it's just questions that I had and...
Sure. And, and we have discussed those same exact issues in our work group. I understand, you can imagine with a group as diverse as what we have. We have had a lot of discussion and, you know, have, have even talked about if we were to ever be provided additional funding, the thinking was to implement at third grade as well and get the devices in the hands of children even earlier. So by the time they get to the upper grades, they would be very skilled in the use of the device.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Murgul.
Mr. Pearson?
Dr. Leary, as you probably know, I'm a former life, a seventh grade life science teacher. And after seeing this, I kind of feel like I taught from the Pleistocene era where we didn't teach students, we taught the textbook. I think life science is a great way to start. It lends itself to this type of technology. And it, it's obvious just from this short presentation, the students are engaged, they enjoy learning. And something that's not missed here, but sometimes not observed or realized by a teacher, maybe, maybe a first-year teacher, that when a student is asked a question and the answer is incorrect, after a couple of times, they're reluctant to respond to any question. This device, which allows them to answer a question if it is incorrect, there's no embarrassment. And so that tends to have that student to stay engaged and maybe look for the next question. So I, I'm really excited about this. I'm going to have to go by Eaton, my former school, and take a look at that.
They would love to have you. Thank you.
Ms. Henry?
I think you answered my question. I was going to ask, the Learning Backpack is a grant kind of situation from the state? And are we waiting, when it said pending, are we waiting for them to issue the grant package or to the results?
We are waiting for them to send us more information.
Okay, so, so that we can apply?
That's correct. Yeah, it's our understanding, based on workshop sessions that we attended in August, that it will be an allocation that we submit application for and that that information will be based on the September 30 Fall Enrollment Report that we'll be submitting. Dr. Woods is actually managing that project and I'm sure we'll be back in front of you with more information and details as the project rolls out.
The money might be available in time for the pilot kind of timeframe or next fall, probably?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, they haven't gotten their act together yet. Okay, thanks.
I have to note that it was really important to us and to the work team to really look at all potential sources of revenue, to try to leverage everything so that we could ramp up in, in a manner that is quick as possible. But also, it's always that, it's that thing about going slow to go fast, you know, do the work upfront so that you realize the things that could be potential pitfalls for you. You know, particularly looking at how other schools, divisions have done the implementation and, and learning from them. That's been so critically important to the work that we're doing. And I do want to say a very special thanks to the work team. Great job.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Harper?
Dr. Leary, you mentioned the selection process of schools and that it's still, the criteria is still pending based on the report, the information from the DOE. How do they go, what, what is the selection process based on?
Well, from what we heard when we were at the session in August, it would be based on accreditation ratings of the high schools.
Okay. And that means that there would, wouldn't be kids left out, they're just not involved in the process yet? You're taking the, the schools that have lower accreditation scores or, or the levels and they're going to be the ones to use this service first?
That's correct. And, and it would be, our understanding is it would be the entire ninth grade.
Okay.
At the school, right.
At the selected school, but not all schools?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and if the funding continues to be available, the intent is for subsequent years as well to roll up for three additional years. So the potential is every child in, in the identified schools would be issued a tablet device. Over the course of four years.
Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I, I want to use the word exciting too, all right? Because I'm very excited. I'm sort of jealous because I would love to be on that work team. I think it's a really great thing. I think it's a direction we need to be going in to, to keep up with technology, keep up with our kids. And I love, I've been, every conference I go to, every convention I go to, I go straight to those classes and listen and try to learn. And the thing I love about what you've shown here is your goals and objectives, you didn't even list, "Put an iPad on every kid's hand." You put student achievement. And that was a big pitfall that in every one of those classes I went to said, "Make sure you're centered around the student achievement." The, the devices are just a tool to get you there. So I love that you have that there and I can tell from the lists that you have here on collaborating and your subgroups that a lot of work has already gone into this and a lot of research, that you are looking at what other people have done because it, it makes perfect sense. You had professional development listed first and that was another pitfall they had talked a lot about. You need to make sure the teachers feel comfortable with these tools and that they're able to actually use them within their curriculum and teach with them and not feel overwhelmed and frustrated because without their buy-in, this isn't going anywhere. So I was real happy to see that right at the top of the list. And my only question is, do you have any thoughts on the pilot? Like what you might do for a pilot type situation? Would it be a certain school or just a couple of teachers or certain grade?
That's a great question. And we actually have a subgroup that's working on that very topic. And they've been tasked with coming back to us on, at our next meeting in October and sharing what their initial thoughts are on what that pilot launch might look like. We've been using a lot of information that's available on a website called Project RED. I think several of, of you have forwarded information to us and it's been very helpful. One of the school districts that you referred us to in Sunnyside was, yes, they are heavily into following the processes as identified by Project RED. And it's very well outlined. And one of the key components to... And one of the key components to the pilot is to have a very specific process for how you roll out your pilot. Because we will be collecting data the whole time that that pilot is being implemented, all kinds of data, you know, anecdotal data as well, visits, observations, because we want to know how the pilot implementation goes. And then, we can make the necessary adjustments to roll out in September. So, you know, I think Dr. Shiflett stated it very well. It is important to go slow to go fast. And so, we plan to be back in front of you several more times before the end of the school year and will provide you continuous updates on our work.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Jeray?
I'm going to be really brief, I promise. I wanted to say that I think that this is a great thing that we have. And the first thing that those students say when you ask how their school year is going is, "Oh, my gosh, let me tell you about this cell or let me tell you about this new app that I just learned about." So, I think that it sets us at a point where our students are more competitive now and they can compete with other students from other places. And I think that that's going to help bridge our test gap that we have because when you have those really hard questions, you can stop and recall, "Well, I saw this cell moving on my iPad and I know that that can't be right." So, I think that those things are things that are going to help us all across the board. And I wanted to piggyback off of one of the other comments that was made. I know if the grant does permit for ninth grade, I think that that's a great thing. I think that a suggestion would be to try to find something to bridge the gap for the other years because you don't want kids who are so excited from middle school and freshman year to have all these things. And then, once they get to 10th and up, they don't have them anymore. And, you know, for some students, that might be a reason for them to kind of check out of everything. So, I think even if we can't get that specific program for those other years, that if there's something that can kind of bridge the gap between what they've had before, that it'll keep them engaged until they finish out.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Great, always great to hear that student perspective and I knew it would probably be pretty positive. And I do want to thank you, Dr. Leary, for your very thorough report and on all of the work team that is working on this project. Obviously, the board is very excited about the possibilities that lie ahead with this initiative. And Mrs. Smith did mention it, but the fact that it appears to be very centered on student achievement is very uplifting for us as a board. And you said it correctly when you started out to have followed our accreditation report, this sort of really piggybacks on that and does speak to how we can, as a division, address some of those things. One of the things that you didn't mention in your report, though, was that some of the studies that you've looked at, I know you've looked at and some of us are familiar with on the board, but just how one-to-one initiatives have affected other school divisions and their ability to improve on testing in all other kinds of areas of academic achievement. And so, I think the possibilities that that provide and really, one of the things the city council was very focused on was creating a level playing field for students. And so, I think that's also one of the great things that this is going to lead to a level playing field for children.
Great.
Thank you so much for the report.
You're welcome.
I think everybody that wanted to comment or ask questions did get a chance to do that. So, and I think we'll all be very interested to hear more about the e-Backpack information as well. So, I know you all are waiting, hopefully, as well.
We are, we are.
We look forward to hearing more on that as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. And if I could just put a plug in for next Wednesday, we will be sharing this information with city council in an effort to make sure that they are as connected as you all are on the progress that we're making. So, periodically, we'll provide updates to them as well. So, next Wednesday at 1:00, we'll be in council chambers.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also, one other little item, you know, we did get a little, you don't have to, I'm not asking you anything. But just that, we talked about the seventh-grade science curriculum and the school board is initiating school board field trips and we're going out and about to visit some of the different programs. And we will be visiting the seventh-grade science classes to check on that and see how that's going. So, we're excited about that as well. I'm sorry, Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you. Our last report for the evening is our monthly business operations and financial update. Dr. Hellman?
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Ms. Mugler, Mr. Kilgore, ladies and gentlemen, school board members, it's a pleasure to be here with you this evening and have the opportunity to present to you the statement of revenues, expenditures, and encumbrances for the period ending August 31st. It is a very early report. You know, with August, the teachers haven't come back yet and we don't have a whole lot of payroll, but everything is somewhat on target. We have received revenues to date of $16,864,536. That's $180,133,541 less than our total budget. Expenditures to date total $12,382,030 or $184,616,047 less than the amount budgeted. So, we're physically in a very liquid situation right now. I think one of the, well, I guess, are there any questions about the report before I go One of the brief updates I know that probably everybody is interested in is what does the shutdown mean to us right now and how is that going to impact us? We have several different areas that receive federal funds. Food services is one of them. They receive schooling and, I'm sorry, school lunch reimbursement through the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Then, we have some major funds in Fund 60, which are administered from the U.S. DOE. Those funds include Titles 1 and 2 of the ESEA, IDA Part B or Title 6B, which is Special Ed Funds as we know it, state grants and career and technical education grants from the federal government. The federal government shut down yesterday and prior to the shutdown, we were appropriated or the federal government appropriated approximately 21% of our total allocations in those areas for the United States Department of Education. So, we have money that will get us through maybe somewhere at the end of October, middle of November. We have also received the appropriation for the remaining funds for that entitlement. So, it's not like we're waiting on the U.S. government to give us the appropriation. The funding is there. Where it gets a little sticky is will the U.S. DOE have the people there necessary to be able to disperse those funds out to us? And we don't anticipate at this time a major problem. It's just going to be a matter of timing and making sure that they can get the funds dispersed to us through the state. Does that clarify any, I hope? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so, some of the allocation has already been awarded and is in the bank?
Yes, ma'am.
The food service reimbursements, what kind of timeframe are they on?
They're running approximately a month behind. And in speaking with Dr. Bryant today, she feels as though we're okay through October. Now, the other piece with food services, she does have a fund balance that will be sufficient to carry us forward until such time as they can get those monies moved forward to us. If you go to the USDA, you'll see that their website is shut down. So, it's been challenging at best to get some information, but we feel confident that we should be okay there.
Other questions for Dr. Hellman?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hellman.
And that concludes our reports.
Thank you very much. Dr. Shiflett, we move on to the hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. Ms. Bowers, would you please present the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues and refrain from personal attacks. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual employees or students as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Our first speaker tonight is Mr. David Dietrich.
Good evening, Ms. Mugler, members of board, Dr. Shiflett. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road. Sorry I missed you last month, I had another engagement. I'd like to look at, it was brought to the attention of the audience, how serious our school board takes its duties. And I'd like to address some areas where I think you may not be taking those duties as seriously as you should and look at what every child, every day, whatever it takes First of all, regarding school defenseless zones, our schoolchildren are still running around with no protection in many cases. How many of our schools have no armed resource officers? What do you say to parents of children in such unprotected schools? Mrs. Mugler, you've said you're happy with our lack of school security. How many shots do you think a gunman can fire before help arrives? Why is it all right for our children to be needlessly slaughtered? Section 18.2-308.1 of Virginia Code addresses firearms on school property. Why have you not taken this case to our legislators in Richmond? Don't you think it's in the best interest of our entire community? Our school division should follow Clarksville, Arkansas's example. Teachers, administrators, and other volunteers are able to be armed. Leaving our children vulnerable to external threats is not an option. Moving on to community engagement, your so-called school blue ribbon panel is now seven months old. What have you done as a group to address the issues I have raised? When will you publish your findings of actions taken? The school board chairman is allegedly the head of the panel. When will you be issuing recommendations for improvement to our school system? What is your timeline for taking corrective action? Like our so-called representatives, you've held no public hearings. Why won't you meet publicly with concerned citizens? I'm talking about discussing real solutions with real people. Tonight, one-to-one program was brought up. What's the current business, community involvement in curriculum standards under that program? How does someone get involved? You don't seem to be interested in accountability for your actions. Don't you owe parents and other concerned citizens answers? Are you nothing more than rubber stamps for the superintendent? Lastly, I'd like to address Common Core state standards. Hampton City Schools and schools around the Commonwealth of Virginia appear to have adopted this federal program, even though officially, it's not a state program. Is this one-size-fits-all approach with no proven test model best for our students? Do less literature and more technical readings really serve our children? You're still not evaluating Hampton City Schools on students' post-graduation performance where it really matters. Don't you think this would be a much better metric than test scores alone? Isn't competitiveness in the real world what matters most? Preparing children to pass tests does them a disservice for life. Beyond attracting more federal dollars, what is the advantage? How is Common Core better or worse than standards of learning? Certain Virginia textbooks seem to provide factually incorrect information. Are you familiar with the book, U.S. History: Preparing for the Advanced Placement Examination? In this book, it incorrectly summarizes the Bill of Rights. And finally, regarding the agenda for tonight, once again, I ask you, where is the discussion of curriculum and market performance of graduates of our school system? Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Our next speaker is Mr. Thomas Scott.
I promised I'd be very brief. I didn't really want to say anything, but I have some paperwork for Ms. Mugler and I would like you to really seriously review this. I understand, you understand I was terminated on September 18th of last month. And I wanted to say one thing before I give you this paperwork. I really would like you to investigate it and it is very serious paperwork that needs to be looked at. And I want to say one thing, since I was 16, I lived in Hampton. I always worked, I always provided for my family. Today, my daughter asked me, "Daddy, what are we going to eat?" It hurts me to my heart that this information was not reviewed by school, school board, but yet still, I was terminated. There's a lot more information with this that Dr. Shiflett knows about and Ms. Robin Roof knows about, but I don't see any way that it was presented to the school board. I'm just going to leave you with this and I wanted everybody to know, you know, I've done my part. I've been an honest citizen. I work every day, I work hard. Now, I'm going through a dialysis due to an injury that I had during my job every day. And I'd like you to read this. Thank you very much. I'll leave it with Ms. Gulata.
Ms. Gulata, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Scott. That concludes our speakers for this evening. Are there any others, Ms. Bowers?
I'll just make a quick statement regarding the Common Core assessments that have been questioned this evening. And just to set the record straight, Hampton City Schools has not adopted the Common Core nor has the state of Virginia. So, that, just so that that's clear.
Madam Chairman, would it be appropriate at this time to, since we're approaching items for action, to add another item to that? Actions for item?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay.
We'll move now to other items for action.
Madam Chairman, I would like to add a 6.4 under items, the Local Disability Plan Resolution. Which is currently listed on the agenda as 7.1.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry that we move item 7.01, Local Disability Plan Resolution. Is there a second to that?
I did.
Sorry. Ms. Phillips has seconded the motion that we move the item from deliberation to action. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. We begin with item 6.01, under Other Items for Action, minutes of the school board retreat of September 18, 2013. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of item 6.01 to 6.04.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve items 6.01 through 6.04, which would include the minutes of the school board retreat of September 18, 2013, the minutes of school board meeting of September 18, 2013, and the certification of the closed meeting of September 18, 2013, as well as the approval of the resolution to adopt the local disability plan. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to items for deliberation, and we'll move on to item 7.02, which is the revision of school board policy GCG certified employees probation and contractual status. Is there any questions or comments, discussion from board members? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to item 7.03, Revision of School Board Policy GCN Performance Evaluation. Are there any questions or comments for deliberation on this policy? Item 7.04, Revision of School Board Policy GBM Instructional Personnel Grievances. Any questions, comments from board members? There being none, we move to 7.05, Revision of School Board Policy GDH Support Personnel Grievance Procedures. Any questions? Any further deliberation on this policy? Item 7.06 is the revision of School Board Policy GCPD Dismissal of Personnel. Any comments or questions? Any further deliberation on this policy? Item 7.07, New School Board Policy GCPF Suspension of Employees. Is there any comment or question on this policy? Item 7.07, New School Board Policy GCPF Suspension of Employees. I just did that one, I'm sorry. Item 7.08, Revision of School Board Policy GCPA Reduction in Workforce. Any questions, comments? Item 7.09, Revision of School Board Policy GCI Staff Assignments and Transfers. Any questions, comments? Item 7.10, Revision of School Board Policy GCI-R Voluntary Transfers and Reassignments. Any questions, comments? Item 7.11 is Revision of School Board Policy GBG Evaluation of the Superintendent. Any comments or deliberation, questions? Item 7.12 is the revision of School Board Policy GBG-R Evaluation of the Superintendent Evaluation System. Any questions, any further deliberation? There being none, we move to 7.13, which is the revision of School Board Policy GCB Instructional Staff Contracts. Any questions, deliberation, comments? Item 7.14, Revision of School Board Policy GCB-R Teacher Contract Schedules. Any questions, comments, or further deliberation on teacher contract schedules? Item 7.15 is the deletion of School Board Policy GBP dash, no dash, Certified Employees' Contract Status. Any questions, any further deliberation or comments, questions from board members? And the last item on deliberation is the revision of School Board Policy GCBB Athletic and Extracurricular Supplements. Any questions or comments, any further deliberation on this policy? Okay. There being none, we move along to deliberation, first read. The first item on the agenda for tonight, under first read, is the revision of School Board Policy GB General Human Resources Policies. Ms. Ruth?
Yes, ma'am. And we only have a legal code reference update for this particular policy, otherwise it remains the same.
Item 8.02 is the revision of School Board Policy GBL Personnel Records.
We have added a paragraph at the bottom of Page 1, and this is coming from some code revisions, and it talks about teacher performance indicators that are used to judge the performance or quality of a teacher. And it is connected to some of the changes with the Educator Fairness Act that we talked about last week, as well as the changes to the evaluation system.
I think I have a question. Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Henry. When it says, "Nothing prohibits the release of or limits the availability of non-identifying aggregate teacher performance indicators," that's just all the regular test reports.
Correct.
And so the other items might be pre-test, post-test, or private things that the teacher did, or ranges that show the particular things that would involve individual students or her own particular work.
Correct, absolutely. Another example might be, there are many states that have gone to, teacher by teacher, they will list student results. Virginia has not moved that far yet, and so this is just language that lets us know we won't be doing that as of yet.
Any other questions for clarification? Item 8.03 is Revision of School Board Policy GBK Tobacco-Free School for Staff.
Yes, ma'am. To this particular policy and also the next policy, which is a student version of the tobacco-free school, we have added e-cigarettes to the list of things that are prohibited. It is a growing trend, and so we just want to nip that in the bud. We do not want our students or our staff using them on property.
Any questions for clarification? And last item on our deliberation first read is the tobacco-free school for students, the e-cigarette.
It's the e-cigarettes are the only change for this particular policy as well.
Any questions from board members on those policies? It's really just a technical change, because an e-cigarette technically is not tobacco.
Yes.
Smoking, though.
Simulates tobacco.
Correct. Yes. We're just closing loopholes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We move on to informational items. Dr. Shiflett?
I just wanted to let you know that Phoenix Pre-K Through 8 School is going to be holding career fairs in November, and so it's never too early for our young people to start thinking about future careers. And the primary grades, grades pre-K through 1, we'll be doing it on Wednesday, November 6. Grades 2 through 5, Wednesday, November 13. And the middle grades, 6 through 8, we'll be doing it on Wednesday, November 20. And if there's anybody interested in coming to the fair to talk about your career, please give the school a call. I also want to say a very special thanks to the many, many volunteers from the USS Abraham Lincoln for all their work on Hampton City Schools. USO sailors from the USS Abraham Lincoln all over our community, Kikatan, Cary, Armstrong. They were doing all kinds of work for us, and we are extremely appreciative of everything that they did. Tomorrow morning, I get to go read, I'm so excited. Jumpstart, Read for the Record at Smith tomorrow morning, and then tomorrow afternoon, we'll be having a meeting of our Hampton Education Foundation.
Any other informational items from board members to add? The next meeting of the Hampton School Board will be our Community Priorities Workshop on October 16. That will be held at 5:30 PM at Andrews Pre-K Through 8 School. And our next regular meeting will be on November 6 at 6:30, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School, in this very location. There's nothing further to come before this board. This meeting is adjourned.